Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just for those who haven't been here before, a few rules of procedure. We are recording the meeting and the recording will be available online at the city website up in the upper right-hand corner, click on the little YouTube bug and get it there. Or you can go online, go to MCTV20live, that's M-C-T-V-two-zero-l-i-v-e, and search for Marion City Council. And you can get these meetings and we encourage you to spread the word about that. And make sure you speak into your mic. If you are going to speak during any of the public comment sessions, you do need to come up to the table here so you will have the microphone available to you. If you're a city employee and are special and because you're near and dear to our hearts, we have your own mic for you over there and you need to use that. And finally, please silence your phones and we will get started with that. I'll call the meeting to order. Any adjustments to the agenda? I will tell you right now that we will not be having an executive session. Maybe Mark could explain that out of the box here.
Okay, sure. We had the power outage and I think the city attorney lost eight computer power for the rest of the day. So we'll just do it next time. He didn't have the documents or anything printed that he might, or any information he might need.
So that change would be to pull number nine out of the agenda. Otherwise, do we have any objection to the agenda? And if not, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve minus taking out number nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Five, zero, approve. With regard to the consent agenda, let's just break it down like we have been. We have the minutes from last meeting. Anyone have any questions or comments with regard to the agenda? Oh, excuse me, the minutes. If not, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Call it move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, box of seconds. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Approved, opposed, nay? And that passes unanimously. Warrants, $143,210.13 on for approval for payment. Any questions about anything under that caption?
Mine?
Go ahead.
You first.
I would say mine's more just a question. Was this, is this the last payment for the pool to the school district that we had on this one? That's what I was thinking.
That was one of my questions. The other one was on page five. Did we overhaul an engine on something?
Yes, we did. It was the 2007, you talking about the?
Yep. The Lee's?
One of the sanitation trucks. It had an oil leak and they got in there and found some other issues with the water pump and things.
Which vehicle was it, Mark?
2007 International Sanitation. It was one of the solid.
Drastic. Got it. And then there was also the payment for the, for doing the, our budget. What is that at here? That was?
It's on page two.
On page two?
That was the audit.
The audit for 21. So the, I thought the, so the total amount was $21,500 for the audit? Okay. And it's when they put together the budget? That was what was 20,000 or 25, we have 2,500, right? Okay. I was just clearing up which of those two numbers came from, make sure we were straight on that. Okay, that was all I had.
Anyone else have anything on that?
I did have one other one. I had those other two that they did as well. But on, I don't know what page it was. There was a deal for Midwest Transformers for $31,201.88. Was that for the new apartments or what were, it was a pad mount? Two different.
It was a 75 for piles and also the schools.
Gotcha, okay. Okay. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, I have a motion then to approve the, approval of the payment of the warrants.
I move to approve then.
Second?
I'll second.
Smith, seconds. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And it's passed. Payroll, $36,322.62. Anyone have any questions about payroll? If not, I'll make a motion that we approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. In the absence of discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. Folks, the matters that are on the agenda for discussion, or action rather, tonight would include the whether, whether to change the time that we lock the bathrooms in Marion Central Park, whether or not we enter in negotiations to sell property to the county out in the commercial area north of the highway. And I've already said, we've taken the executive session off the agenda. So really, just those two things. Anyone want to make any comments with regard to those matters? Okay, then we will move on. And let's talk about bathrooms. Great subject, always enjoy discussion of those. When we met last week, Margot started it. She mentioned that there'd been some vandalism to the bathroom in Central Park. There's been vandalism in Central Park since 1991 that I'm aware of. I mean, I think it's just a thing, but that doesn't mean that, that it's good, that we don't have to do what we can to address it. And so one of the things we discussed was, right now, it is, those restrooms, those bathrooms are open until midnight. And Zach can, well, why don't I just do this? Zach, I asked you before the meeting in terms of a best time to lock them up, and you jokingly said five o'clock, which would be the, or maybe that was the worst time because that was shift change.
Right, yeah, that was the worst time to lock them.
Yeah. But it, other than that, is there, do you have an opinion as to what would be appropriate?
No, and like I told you, the only reason we left them open until midnight is because the park is open until midnight and so it made sense to me that if the park is available, then all the facilities should be available. My only opinion about the restrooms being open is that it probably is going to have to change depending on the seasons, but if we want to pick a certain time of day to do it, I would say once it's dark, we can probably lock them. But as far as like saying that at eight o'clock, they're locked, I don't, it makes no difference to me, but I, if we lock them at dark, that would be my preference, probably.
Is that because that's when the vampires come out?
Yeah.
Okay. As long as it's a valid reason.
Well, once it's dark, those lights are on, there's lots of bugs there, it gets kind of gross, so.
Were there cameras? I know you said that you guys had ordered cameras. Have, did they come in yet to be installed?
Yeah, they got installed, but there was some sort of Wi-Fi issue, so we're going to try and figure that out this week.
Come on, guys, you wanted this on the agenda.
I just, you know, the comment that nothing good happens after dark. I, I.
I think it's after 2:00 AM or something like that.
Oh, is it after 2:00 AM?
I always get told midnight, yeah.
Yeah. I kind of agree, Zach, with what you said. You know, when it gets dark out, I think it's a good time. I don't think anybody needs to be, you know, it's a safety issue too. And, and right now, we're having issues with vandalizing and, you know, that's, that's my opinion.
Which they're locked for half the year in the winter time anyway, right? They're never even available in the.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly. Margot, do you know when they stop unlocking them? But yeah, they're, they're unavailable for a portion of the year.
Who you, the question was who uses the park at night? I, I guess that's a, whoever wants to, I guess, with Amy. Obviously, kids hang out down there, there's no question about that. But kids are going to hang out somewhere. I, I have driven by and I'm going back to your thing. Do they see this, you know, in pitch black or was it in the, but I've seen a lot of people, a lot of families there in the evenings with kids and things of that nature.
So I got called over there for something not related to the bathrooms last night at, at nine and there were three or four adults there and there was a family with kids playing on the equipment still. Now, they left shortly after nine o'clock because it was dark, but it's used pretty regularly.
I don't mind the, locking them at dark, to me, seems like that would, if we're going to change the time, that that would be the time that would make sense. I kind of thought, you know, in my head, I mean, I was going to suggest 10:00. At least that was a couple hours earlier and that still gives you a little bit of time after dark. And then like you said, is maybe we get more into winter time, then, you know, maybe you lock them at 6:00 when it starts getting dark at 5:30 or something, but.
Well, yeah, we could certainly link a time change on that to daylight savings time or whatever.
Well, I think clearly the park's going to be busier, you know, now in the summertime months is what it would be opposed to the winter. But I mean, I guess we need to try something because that vandalism keeps costing everybody time, money, and headaches, so. Do you think the cameras will help? It'd be much of a deterrent, anyway.
I don't know if they'll necessarily deter because there were already cameras there, but we'll at least know who's doing it and we can do something about it. Whereas right now, we're, we're left in the dark, pardon the pun.
Right.
Where'd you install them at? Where are they, are they like?
That was secret.
It's a secret.
Okay. So yeah, they're basically right on each door.
Oh, okay.
Pointing opposing.
I think 10:00 is a reasonable time. You know, people traveling through to, like, for me with little kids, I always like to stop somewhere to use the restroom. And I, that still gives plenty of time for anybody traveling through, families to still be out there.
I'll make a motion that we lock the bathrooms at 10:00. This seems like it's a very long conversation for locking of bathrooms.
They don't have much else to talk about.
I agree, but it was going to take as long as it took for you people to make it to.
Okay, there we go. I'm making a motion to lock the bathrooms at 10:00 PM.
I'll second.
So Amy, you don't even get a chance to be a co-sponsor.
They're happy.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So 10:00. And in that regard, Margot, would you make a note to talk with me? And let's brainstorm a little bit about where and how we can make that publicly known to, so that if someone were traveling through town or whatever, that we could, they know that there are public restrooms available in the park, that, that sort of thing. Okay, next is the question of the sale of the lot out north of town. And Mark, do you want to introduce our guest?
Sure. County Administrator Tina Spencer is here and she can probably answer some of the questions. But county contacted us, whether we're interested in selling the lot up at 12:40. That would be the lot on the north side of the building that they're currently renovating for the planning and zoning and some other uses. They need it primarily for parking and possibly a little bit of storage.
Tina, you, as you do to people now in your office, you have to come sit at our table.
And I might note, they have currently the county building just to be.
That's all county.
Okay.
The building they're renovating.
Gotcha.
So our building is completely renovated and our offices have moved in and we're conducting business there, so. We just realized that when their staff is there, there's not really much place for the public to park. And so that, there's a vacant lot directly north of our property and we also have the property to the east, all the way to the, to the backside there for our EMS station. And so we were just, the commissioners were interested in acquiring that lot behind our building.
What, what's your intentions for the lots behind the ambulance building now? Because I mean, I was out there and that's a pretty substantial, you know, piece of property. Would that not work for you? I know it's not directly adjacent to it, but would that not work for your parking there?
It's not the preferred spot for it. We really haven't talked about the use behind the EMS station, but we do have a need for equipment storage. So at some point, there may be for, for emergency management equipment, not for like road graders or anything like that. But that might be an option for some of that behind the EMS station in the future. But the board hasn't discussed that.
Is there access currently from that back road for parking to come in from the back?
Yes.
That it's, as far as the driver, to get, there's not a ditch?
There's a ditch, but there's a covert already there.
There's a covert already there, okay.
I just drove out by there before I came down. So there is a covert there with some raw cover.
Tina, are, do you, and you may not know the answer to this, but would the thought process be to pave an area behind your renovated building or gravel that area or?
The, the idea for now would be a gravel parking area.
Not the whole.
Not saying it wouldn't necessarily be paved in the future, but there has also been discussion about potentially us, like, just a very small storage shed for emergency equipment, overflow items like, just supplies, not equipment.
I'll just lay my cards on the table. My, I have no objection to it. I wish I could tell you that we have, you know, businesses just dying to get that spot, but this area has been open for 30-some years.
Right.
And it's, it's, I think our best shot of filling business spaces probably is on Main Street to be, and maybe that's better anyway. But I, I just don't want it to be just random junk. Not talking about your car. No, car, parking's fine. You know, you had staff get parking, even if it's parking for people using, I, I don't care. I just would not, I would object if it were to become just a, here's a spot, let's drop this thing and they'll be there forever.
No, that's not the intention.
Any other questions or?
We're going to retain the mineral rights in case they strike oil.
Good idea. And then, then all of a sudden.
Then we have to do a sever.
No, I'm joking.
Severed minerals.
Our oil rig would be fine. It would look just great there.
It would be beautiful.
I mean, I guess that's kind of my thought too. I mean, originally, the intention was to try and get businesses and stuff out there. And like you said, there hasn't been a lot going on. And I'm definitely not, not against the county and thankful to have the county seat and everything here in our community. But that's, like I said, I was just kind of curious what the intention was with all that behind the ambulance building. And then I guess maybe this is a question for Mark. So, you know, we currently have where the Pizza Hut was and then the property wrecked to the north. That's a little bit off topic, but I mean, are there regulations as far as what can be stored and parked out there?
We were looking that up today. That came up today. We can add that for your next meeting.
Okay. I think that's a great topic of discussion.
I mean, I went out by there just to kind of familiarize exactly where everything was there and. Yeah, so I was just curious on that. The only thing that I was thinking, and I was trying to do some research and I don't know, Mark, if you were able to find anything.
We looked through that, we haven't found it yet. We're looking through those boxes.
I thought that I remembered that there was a document somewhere that showed like a price that was associated with all these lots the city had listed on them. And I talked with my dad and asked him if he remembered where it was or, or what it was. And he didn't remember. He said there was a map somewhere, he thought, that showed it. In my head, $5,000 is what sticks out, but that may have just been these, kind of these ones that, he thought maybe it was 5,000 on these lots that have more, what would be off commercial. So like in between Ace and where the, the new county building is there.
Like the highway front.
Highway front. It's not really highway front, but that are right up against the highway. And then he thought maybe 3,500 is what they'd had them priced at at the back. I don't have anything that shows that. I, but the 5,000 even stuck out to me somewhere. So I, that's my only comment. And I don't know for sure where that, where that came from. We have not been able to find anything yet.
So if the city has the property listed publicly for sale somewhere at those prices, you know, I can always go back to the commission and see if they would be willing to pay that.
True.
Because we want to be fair to the city. But also, if it's been listed at that price publicly and there have been absolutely nobody interested, then is that truly the market value of the property? So we want it, we want to do what's beneficial for both the city and the county, so.
Did, I'm just curious, did you look up, see what it's appraised at?
It's appraised at $1,000. Last year, I believe it was appraised at $600.
With that in your letter, could I?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That was on that, that page.
Yeah.
And I would assume maybe this is something we could figure out too. I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm with you, Tina. I, I get it, right? There, like Mike said, it's been there for a long time and there's not much out there.
Right.
I know that we have some costs tied up in now, however many years ago it was put in there, but the utilities that were put in out there. And I don't know what that amount of money, well, you know, what that would be for when those utilities were put in, the water lines or whatever it might be, but.
Just for the sake of moving the discussion along, does anyone have a, right off the bat, a negative thought with regard to, one way or the other, transferring that property over to the county? Anyone opposed to the concept?
No.
Amy?
No.
So really, it would just be a matter of what to charge, if to charge, that sort of. I, where I'm going with this is, we have talked in the past about kind of, I don't know if it's called a bartering system, but where, you know, the.
Government communication.
Okay, government communication, very well. You've learned fast, haven't you? Well, the ability to, you know, if we help you with this, can you help us with that?
Right.
Were you hoping for an answer tonight?
Not necessarily. I mean, we're, we're making do with just kind of parking wherever in that lot, but it doesn't look very nice and it's, it doesn't leave a lot of space for people that need to come to the building to, to do business. So we would like an answer soon, but it doesn't necessarily need to be tonight.
As a, a long, long, long time worker in the public administration field, do you, top of your head, think of something that typically there in Emporia, you would have traded Lyon County if you were in this situation or?
Well, there are different times. Like when we did the new radio systems, the county paid for the towers and we paid for our own radios. And we, they set some back in the 60s for that. The city, in that, in Lyon County, we ran the landfill and the transfer station, but they took care of all these other needs. We traded, they run 911 for us and we have EMS. So there's been things like that for a long, long time. And on a joint road, we work with the county. If it's a, we're putting industrial park ends or the county road. Historically, we got to fund it with economic development grants. But it, we work with the county all the time.
Would it be unfair to you or to Tina if we were to ask you to meet with her and negotiate a proposal that could be put on our agenda in two weeks?
That'd be fine. I'd like to do that. That'd be fine.
Is it worth it over $1,000 though? Or we just do it and?
Well, that's a good point.
That's kind of my thought, to be honest. It's, it's not like there's a way.
Our memory of things tends to not always be the greatest, so maybe if we just finish it and move on. Then we can't forget what we said we were going to do or not do in the future.
The only thing I was trying to explore was whether there was something that would involve not charging them anything, but them agreeing to help with something.
Mutually.
And I, I know that's, if we were talking about 50,000, that'd be a little easier to try to figure out what that is than 1,000, I guess, but.
I agree.
Well, I, I have no objection, Tim. I, I mean, I, I was just trying to move the thing along a little bit here, so is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we do transfer it for the price of $1,000 to the county. Sell it.
Is there a second?
Price of $1,000.
I'll second.
Mark, I, I believe that this was, the public was put on notice that we were going to do this. I think the last meeting we talked about it. Am I, yeah, okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion, Tim or Zach?
Is there anything else we have to do when we sell property like this to post it or anything? I don't think so.
Wouldn't think so, no.
Nope.
I'm not worried about that.
Yeah. All right, no discussion.
Zach, you said, you seemed to think that there was something written down where we had the higher value on those? I thought, but again, I, I don't know where it would be.
I remember hearing a discussion about that, unless I read it in the paper. But if I read it in the paper, that meant that somebody had a discussion.
Right.
In the council meeting about the, what those prices were. But ultimately, you know, this is not exactly me being a genius, it's worth what somebody's willing to pay for it.
Right.
And right now, we got one buyer.
Yep.
And if we, if something comes up in the meantime, we have to prepare the documents. We'll, we'll sure bring that back.
Okay.
For the deed transfer and things like that.
Yeah, well, I'll do that.
Well, and the counties, you know, the commissioners still need to take action to move forward if, if the amount is acceptable to them, so.
So I thought that was an offer. So I may go back to the, the God, my days as a godfather. I, I thought that they were making a request of us.
Well, we are.
They're asking us to make an offer to them.
We are. But they haven't taken any action to make a purchase, which, so this is just a discussion. And we just suggested that that might be a fair price because that's the valuation that the appraiser has on it, the market value.
I, Tim, if I'm, let, correct me if you like this phrase differently, but I'm going base, and that, it's obviously correct. Tina's right. Basically, what your motion is, is to approve the sale of that lot at that price if the county wishes to purchase it at that price.
Depending there, yes, depending on approval. Yep, I will amend my motion to say it that way.
You second it?
I'll second that deal.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?
Aye. Or nay, excuse me.
Oh, that was, seriously, nay? Okay, so four, one.
Okay, I can take, I'll take it to the commission and then we'll get back with you. Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to the executive session that we're not going to have and then into department staff and council member reports.
Are we doing the sewer relining?
You missed one there.
Oh, I jumped right, I'm marking things out and I marked that out instead of marking out the sale of the lot. Yes, talk sewer, Mark.
This is a, a line underneath 256 on the north side of the park. We discovered a hole in it and we had some sanitary sewer flooding. And so in need fit, we hired Meyer out of Goddard to come in and run a camera through it. They found the holes like 2:00 in a heavy rain event. It, it caused some problems and there's other cracks and holes developing. So we're going to recommend in lieu of tearing up the road, which it just did expensive and a lot more inconvenient. And we got a quote from Meyer for about $20,333.80. And we think we can have that done in three or four weeks. We kind of tend to, they put on, put our name on their list to do. And they'll go from the manhole to the manhole 352 feet. We, we estimate the clay tile there is over 50 years old. And we have funds in the sewer division utility fund to pay for it. But this is the easiest remedy. Probably be shut down, maybe the highway will be flagged for maybe half a day max versus closing it and having detours once you cut it out.
Oh, okay, you lost me then.
If, well, if you, if you did a dig on it, if you didn't do it this route, the other thing, if you dig up the street.
Right. And if you did that, you, that would be really problematic.
That'd be problematic. You'd have to detour around it now.
But what do you mean, it would be flagged then?
Well, the other, I'm not sure what they'll do if sometimes on a highway, I'm not sure how that's exactly. They'll, they'll run from manhole to manhole. They may have to do something on the highway in the morning for an hour or two.
If they have to do like one lane traffic or something, is that what you mean?
Something like that.
Okay. And which.
That'd be the worst-case scenario.
Given that that is how you get from one side of town to Marion and then the other, if that were to occur, I definitely want to make sure that they coordinate with the police department.
Absolutely.
Because if it's like when school's in session, it might be such, we'd want just to have an officer monitoring that area the whole time because.
Well, I hope to have it done. Well, I hope to have it done by the end of June.
Okay, well, then never mind.
When we're on the list, unless we take it off.
Then never mind, okay.
Are the two manholes that we're talking about that they're going from, are they both in the street?
I think they're both in the park. The park's on the north side and the south side of the road.
But they're in, I'm sorry, I'm looking over your shoulder, back at the guys back there too. I saw them shaking their heads, that's why I was asking. They are out in the street, so that's probably what we're talking about.
Oh, you're going this way.
They may have to shut it down to one lane. Okay.
Oh, I was going north and south. We're going east and west too.
East and west.
Okay. Well, then they definitely will have to work out something.
And I think we'll probably, and you guys probably know this, but we'll probably have to coordinate with KDOT too on anything that shuts it down to even one, anything that impedes traffic at all.
So the question is whether Mark can go forward and incur that expense, keeping in mind that we're talking about that old orange clay pipe under there that was old when everybody but me was born. So can Mark do that?
I think it's a no-brainer.
Sounds like it's the best way to fix it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Meyer on the relining of the sewer line on Main Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Trying to get to my, there we go.
Do you want me to include the amount in that motion?
Well, I've got it upside down, but I'll get there.
Twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and eighty cents.
Uh, okay, I'll amend my motion to?
It's on the very bottom, last page.
Yep. To approve the quote from Meyer and the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and eighty cents for the relining of the sanitary sewer on Main Street.
Okay, and I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay, second by Burkholder. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Unanimous? Okay, now we'll move on to council reports and staff reports. Rather than call each of you individually and make you try to think of something to say, I'll just ask, any of the staff have anything you wish to adjust to the council? No, but, okay. Janet? Mark?
Now, next meeting we'll have consideration to see, conditional you permit for the solar farm and also, you guys have done a really good job of having the same company we just talked about, Meyer Specialty, come in and clean your, a third of your town every year, which is very good. They'll, they'll have an agreement before you, a third of the town this year.
No. Okay, we'll then go to council reports and Amy?
I don't really have anything. I just thought Chingawassa days went obviously over well and without a hitch and I think everybody was respectful and, and, yeah.
That was something I was gonna mention too. I, I thought, two things. I know that every time we do Chingawassa, the city crews do a lot of work helping get the park and the community prepared for it, so kudos on that. And to the Chingawassa committee, I, I, from having been in their position, I know when you've got uncertain weather and it is just gut-wrenching trying to figure out what to do. And they, at two o'clock on Saturday, I looked at the Weather Channel app on my phone and it said seventy-five percent chance of rain, I think at seven-thirty, thirty, something like that.
Yeah.
And by that time, it was like nothing.
It was perfect weather.
Yeah, so, and, and Landon is both a city employee and, oh, he's proud that he's an official, he's got his shirt on. So take, to both of those groups, please take our congratulations.
Yeah, you guys did a great job. Also, today the power kind of flashed on and off, well, for us, and I know it went out, and you guys responded really quickly, like really quick. It's kind of like a disco party in our house for a few minutes and we didn't lose power though.
Okay, so I asked Mark this question and he didn't have an answer. Janet's gonna say no. But we have the system that sends out either text messages or emails. I don't know what it is. Text. Excuse me?
Code red.
It's red alert, as far as I'm concerned. I told you, it's gonna be red alert to me. You can call it whatever you want. That we use for, I guess, emergencies. And if it were like an amber alert and there was a tone that, you know, you're, somebody's like, oh, I gotta pay attention to that, that would be one thing. But here where it's just a message, I'm wondering, would it be worth at least thinking about using that to just convey information to the public other than something that's an emergency or a disaster? Such as we, the power, not, it's not surges, but the power shortages today are the result of an animal and a transformer and we're working on it and having to redo some, whatever you said, what was it? I can't hear you.
Lighting arrester.
Lighting arrester.
Yeah, but that was not what you were flipping on and off.
No, the breakers off.
The breakers, yeah. And just so the public knows what it is, I don't know, that's not something I'm asking for anybody to act, to do any action on, but I'm.
I think that's a great idea.
They get calls and messages on certain things, but we can start now.
Like what, okay, what, other than?
Like if there's a holiday during the week, we'll send out where, what days their trash will be picked up.
Okay.
We used it some when we were doing the strategic plan to, to remind people, I think we did anyway, to remind people to try and take some of the surveys and stuff. We've used it for some communication, more just communication knowledge type stuff.
Well, people are calling in though, reporting. It goes directly to you guys or one of you's on call, right? So my, I'm also assuming you probably take a lot of phone calls in a period of time when you're trying to get stuff done, which it might alleviate that a bit by having something just put out publicly saying, alert, power's out, unknown, probably thirty minutes, just, just something that's out there. So there's fewer people that's like, I need to call and say my power's out, and then you guys are taking calls or avoiding calls because you're trying to get it fixed.
I think it's a good idea because then people go on Facebook and they're trying to figure out who has power, who doesn't have power, where, you know, where the outage is at. And it can be directly, you know, just sent to those, to everybody.
Now, inspector, as a great legal mind and, and law enforcement expert, what fact can you deduce from the conversation we've just had?
I think it would be a good idea to send out the alerts.
The fact is, I don't get the red alerts and I need to sign up.
Yeah, you gotta let it out.
I know, I need to sign up.
Can you do it online?
You keep this way off like text numbers.
Did I give email, yeah?
Is that something that you could put like on the city web page that you could?
I don't know, is it on the city website? I don't think it is.
Sign up for it?
I don't know that it's on there to sign up for it, but I think it says to contact the city.
Obviously, my, my wife is, does receive the, the code reds or whatever she said it was, but I just never have, but I obviously need to if I'm gonna be.
There is, I was looking back through to see what type of stuff I've gotten from it. And here's one from last October that says, we're aware of the power outage, crews have isolated the problem and are hoping it won't take too long to fix. So it has been used for things like that.
There's something out there that are taking twenty phone calls every ten minutes.
So I think you, I'm not saying that, I don't want people to, like, you know, if you say the sky's falling often enough, nobody pays attention to you. I don't want to do that, but feel free to use it for things. I just know as, I happen to be, as that was going on, I happened to be going in a couple or three businesses and they were all, got to pull their hair out.
Yeah.
Zach?
I had two things here, let me get back in there. One, are we doing the work session next Monday? Was there ever a decision actually made on that?
Yeah, we thought there were conflicts.
Okay, I, I couldn't remember how we had left it for certain.
Well, we left it that you were all, were, didn't want to work and?
Perfect. Let's leave it.
We'll get paid. No, we're not having one there.
Okay. And then, yeah, just to go along with what you guys said, I was down in the park both nights and it was awesome. I mean, somehow that park recovers from massive amounts of rain every year on Chingawassa, it seems like. I mean, we just get gully washers and it's like an hour later, it's perfectly fine. It's, it's amazing, so. And I saw a lot of out-of-town faces Saturday night that I did not recognize, so I think that's, kudos to you guys on getting the bands that we get in here. That's, Carrie and I were talking about it and we're sitting there in the park Saturday night, like, that's something that's pretty special to have in a town our size. You don't see that around everywhere, so I think that's, I know you guys put a lot of time and effort into that, but that's a, it's a really fun event. My kids look forward to it every year.
Kevin?
I'll say, like I said, the same thing, just shout out to Ron and the rest of the crews for getting the park ready and the Chinga Committee. I thought they did a great job. The one thing I did notice when I was down there in the back of the park and I talked to Jeff Harper about that today, that old merry-go-round, that thing needs some repair. Cause there was a bunch of kids on that thing just going round and round and there's, and Jeff and I talked a little bit today, so I think there's, he was gonna look into what it would take. Some, he said even the center pipe is maybe starting to rust a little bit, but like a couple of the boards were broke and some of the railings were bent and.
You need a tetanus shot like after you write on that.
I think, so anyway, they were gonna look into that, but.
The thing about that old equipment is, like, I had, my grandson is, I guess he's six now, and he just was, thought that stuff was the greatest thing in the world because he, every, he lives in, well, Bonner Springs, Kansas City area. Everywhere he goes, it's all this safe, nice stuff. And he thought those things were just fantastic.
I thought it was the greatest thing in the world when I was six and that was a year or two ago, so. Cause it was there when I was a kid, so.
Who ran into the slipper slide? You said that real quickly, was it you?
We have a suspect in mind.
Okay.
Is it salvageable?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay, that's a cool, I mean, those old slides are, there, there's something cool to them, the merry-go-rounds, there's something, something cool to them.
That was all, that was all I had.
Yep, Tim?
I went down to the library and they had some water damage here in this last rain. And so I went down and when I was down there, I talked to them and a little bit about that and, so the, the old part of the building's, half it's got a sloped roof, half it's, I think, got a flat roof. So when there's a lot of water, it hits the walls and has to go down the gutter. So if there's anything plugging them up on where it's come down really fast, the water's coming in through the roof somewhere. And so I just investigated that a little bit. I know Tim, someone else had gone down there and was looking at the roof and everything, but it had done damage to the walls, to the sheet rock, the drywall on the walls and the carpet, and there's quite a few books on the table that were damaged too. And this has happened on a couple occasions now. And there's also in the little area going to the new addition, the roof had, there had some damage too. Whether it was from, I believe from this one, but some of the tape on the drywall's coming off and that is pretty kind of significant damage to the, to the drywall. So I was just curious, as far as insurance, I asked her about that and said, and when it happened previously, there wasn't enough damage for them to warrant a claim. But who turns that in? You do? Okay, so I was gonna let you know, we might wanna turn that in because I noticed there's quite a bit of damage there and it's all together, so.
Tim, was that damage in the same spot where they had damage previously?
Some of it was, yeah.
So it's kind of in that same?
It had happened, where it happens, it's happening in the same place, but this time there was water definitely in all of those places, so. Anyway, that's all I had to report.
Okay.
On that.
Just a couple of things. I, I will be making appointments to the zoning board next meeting or nominating parties for the zoning board. And last week, or last meeting, we talked with James Masters about the building codes and updating those. And one of the things we discussed was maybe having kind of an educational, informational opportunity so those, whether you're a developer or a builder or, you know, whatever, you could get with him and, and talk about that whole process. He agreed that that would be a good idea and something he was willing to work on, but